Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I will call to order our Bloomington City Council meeting. Tonight is Monday, February 10th, 2025. This is our City Council Business Meeting. Thank you to everybody who has joined us here in the council chambers and everybody watching online. We'll start our meeting as we always do. If you're able, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Once again, thank you to everyone here and everyone watching. Thanks to the council for being here. We are down two council members tonight. We're missing Councilmember De La Sando and Councilmember Rebus. Oh, excuse me, I'm looking right at you. I'm looking right at you. Councilmember Lowman and Councilmember Rebus, I apologize. So we're down to five members. And we've got a fairly short agenda tonight, council. And our first order of business, of course, is to approve the agenda. Under our introductory items, we will make appointments to a variety of health boards and commissions. Two point one is appointments to the Advisory Board of Health. Two point two is appointments to the Creative Placemaking Commission. Two point three is the Human Rights Commission Appointments. Two point four are appointments to the Parks, Arts, and Recreation Commission. And two point five are appointments to the Sustainability Commission. Our consent business has nineteen items on it. Councilmember Nelson has our consent business this evening. We have nothing under item four, Hearings, Resolutions, and Ordinances. And under Organizational Business, item five, we have two items. Item five point one is a discussion item regarding right-of-way permitting code updates. And then we'll wrap up, as we always do, with our City Council Policy and Issue Update. Council, any corrections or additions or anything else to add to tonight's agenda? If not, I would move tonight's agenda as stated.
Second.
Motion and a second by Councilmember Carter to accept tonight's agenda as stated. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries five zero. First order of business tonight, council, is a series of appointments, as I mentioned. We have talked about this in the past. I'll bring it up once again. The process that we have for appointments to our boards and commissions here in the city of Bloomington has changed significantly over the past few years, and I will say changed for significantly for the better. We have a formal process. We have an opportunity to meet with applicants. We have interview panels that then recommend appointments to the council based off of the information that applicants have sent in, the conversation that they had, and then the conversations with the interview panel. So it's a robust conversation. It was last Monday night, actually. I think we had more than forty interviews on Monday night. For each of those four, those five boards and commissions that I mentioned, we had dozens of interviewers working. And I don't know about the rest of you, but it took our group in the Parks, Arts, and Recreation Commission about seven hours to finish up our work. So we were there a long time. I just say this all to remind everyone, this is a robust process and significantly more robust than it has been, excuse me, in the past. And I think the result has been a considerable improvement in our application pool, the number of folks that who apply, the quality of folks that apply, and then the work that they do on the boards and commissions once they're appointed. So I do want to to lay it out in that way. And as we wrap this up, excuse me, I'm fighting a chest issue here, a lung issue. As we wrap this up, I will talk about the work of our staff who do outstanding work with this and put this all together. But we will start with item two point one, which is our appointments to the Advisory Board of Health. And as I mentioned, we did have interview panels. And on three or four of those interview panels, we had council member representation. And so I know on the Advisory Board of Health, Councilmember Carter was our council representative. Councilmember, I'm going to turn it over to you to get the the report from the Advisory Board of Health interview panel and to make the recommendations for the council.
All right, well, thank you, Mayor. So I was joined by one of the commissioners on the Advisory Board of Health, and we had a very, very competitive candidate pool. And so for those who are watching and may have applied, thank you very much. It is always great when that's the our big problem is just too many amazing candidates. So we did end up coming to a conclusion to recommend Courtney Johnson and Melissa Knutson. So Courtney Johnson brings a very robust background in public health, started her career off in global health, and then has, I think she's now a researcher at the University of Minnesota. So passionate interest in supporting the aging community, she talked about that at length, multidisciplinary background. And then she actually grew up in Bloomington, so has strong Bloomington ties. And then she, when we asked the question around our strategic plan, she, you know, talked a lot about her passion in connecting local community members and organizations with local government. And so. And then the second person, Melissa Knutson, she's actually a veterinarian and talked about how initially she had been really interested in applying to the Board of Health because of her strong understanding and knowledge in infectious diseases, which we are seeing, obviously, become a pretty big issue again. And but then she also talked about that she's very passionate about social isolation and mental health and thinking through strategies on how we could address those. She has experience working with diverse groups through some organizations she's volunteered with and so so a pretty good understanding of the health of communities who are disproportionately impacted and and feels very passionately about supporting communities and working with communities who are disproportionately impacted by different things. So that's where we landed. And again, a very competitive candidate pool, really grateful for everybody who applied.
Thank you, Councilmember Carter. Council, any questions of Councilmember Carter regarding the interviews for the Advisory Board of Health appointments? So the two recommendations of the interview panel were for Courtney Johnson and Melissa Knutson. That is to say, you are free to vote for whoever you would like, but that's the recommendation of the panel. And we will do this as we always do. I'm going to turn to our council secretary, Safa Mercer, and she will call the roll and we will vote as appropriate until we get to a candidate or two candidates who have four votes each and will then make them, Councilmember Carter will make the appointment or the motion for the appointment to the Advisory Board of Health.
Thank you, Mayor.
Safa.
De La Sando.
I'll support the recommendations of the commission and vote for Johnson and, sorry, Courtney Johnson and Melissa Knutson.
Carter.
Courtney Johnson and Melissa Knutson.
Nelson.
Johnson and Knutson.
Muah.
Johnson, Knutson.
And Mayor Bussie.
Courtney Johnson and Melissa Knutson. So if my math is correct, we have five votes for the two recommended candidates. Councilmember Carter.
So I would move to appoint, I believe, Courtney Johnson. Oh, thank you. Yes, Courtney Johnson to a consumer member seat from March 1st, 2025 to February 29th, 2028 on the Advisory Board of Health.
Actually, I think we can do them as a as a package. How about that?
Oh, okay. And Melissa Knutson to a provider member seat from March 1st, 2025 to February 29th, 2028 on the Advisory Board of Health.
We have a motion by Councilmember Carter, second by Councilmember De La Sando, to appoint Courtney Johnson as a consumer member and Melissa Knutson as a provider member to the Advisory Board of Health. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries five zero. Thank you very much, Councilmember Carter. Moving on, item two point two is an appointment to our Creative Placemaking Commission. This was one of the interview panels where we did not have a city council member who was part of the interview panel. But the recommendations that came forward were three people. And the notes that we have from the interview panel was that all of these candidates were aware of and understood the work of the commission as it relates to Bloomington and a connection to the community. And we know how important that is, especially now as the Creative Placemaking Commission, the work of the Creative Placemaking Commission is going citywide. And so these are important appointments, and these are important, the important work that the Creative Placemaking Commission will be doing. So based on the interviews and the work that the interview panel did, they recommended the appointment of Beth McCoy, Paul Coat, and Megan Lundquist to appointments to the Creative Placemaking Commission. Any questions on that, council? All right. If not, Safa, could you take us through the vote, please?
De La Sando.
Coat, Lundquist, McCoy.
Muah.
McCoy, Coat, Lundquist.
Nelson.
Lundquist, McCoy, Coat.
Carter.
McCoy, Coat, Lundquist.
And Mayor Bussie.
Coat, Lundquist, McCoy. So based on a five O tally for the three recommended appointees, council, I would make a motion to appoint Beth McCoy to a term from March 1st, 2025 to February 29th, 2028, Paul Coat to a term from March 1st, 2025 to February 29th, 2028, and Megan Lundquist to a same term, March 1st, 2025 to February 20, 29th, 2028, on the Creative Placemaking Commission.
Second.
A motion and a second by Councilmember Muah for the appointments of Beth McCoy, Paul Coat, and Megan Lundquist. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries five zero. Item two point three on our agenda is an appointment, our appointments to the Human Rights Commission. And Councilmember Nelson was our council member representative on that interview panel. You were not? You had an emergency come up. All right. Did we have a council representative on that interview panel? Very good. Well, the the Human Rights Commission, as we know, aids and advises the council in ensuring that all residents have equal opportunity in employment, housing, and public combinations, public services, and education, and in other affairs that affect the social well-being of this community. And based on the interviews, the recommendations from the interview panel from the Human Rights Commission, that the following, the following candidates were best aligned with the key priorities of this commission. And they listed five folks who were best aligned. And then they made the recommendation for the appointment to the Human Rights Commission. And the the recommendations from the interview panel were to appoint Julia Perry, Nawang Gonzar, Baron Lewis, and Jessica Thornton to terms on the Human Rights Commission. Any questions on that, council? Very good. Safa.
Muah.
Perry, Gonzar, Lewis, Thornton.
Carter.
Perry, Gonzar, Lewis, and Thornton.
De La Sando.
Sorry, Gonzar, Lewis, Perry, Thornton.
Nelson.
Gonzar, Lewis, Perry, Thornton.
Mayor Bussie.
Gonzar, Lewis, Perry, Thornton. We have five votes for the four recommended candidates, candidates recommended by the interview commission. Council, I would make a motion to appoint Julia Perry, Nawang Gonzar, and Baron Lewis to terms from March 1st, 2025 to February 28th, 2026, and Jessica Thornton to a term from March 1st, 2025 to February 28th, 2027, on the Human Rights Commission.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor. I believe the first two were appointed through 2028.
Oh, I'm sorry, I misread. I misread. I will restate my my motion if I could.
Thank you.
Apologies, council. Thank you for catching that, councilmember. I would make a motion to appoint Julia Perry and Nawang Gonzar to a term on the Human Rights Commission from March 1st, 2025 to February 29th, 2028, to appoint Baron Lewis to a term from March 1st, 2025 to February 28th, 2026, and appoint Jessica Thornton to a term from March 1st, 2025 to February 28th, 2027. Motion and a second by Councilmember De La Sando to make those appointments to the Human Rights Commission as stated. And again, thank you, councilmember, for catching me on that one. Any further council discussion on this? Hearing none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero. Item two point four were, was the appointment of to, is the appointment to the Parks, Arts, and Recreation Commission. And this was actually the commission that I staffed the interview panel. We had, we had eighteen applications and sixteen interviews that night. So we had a busy night. And much like everyone else who participated, I was so very impressed with the people that we had a chance to talk to, the experiences that they brought and the passion that they brought to all three of those things, parks, arts, and recreation. And there were some very specific talents associated with each, with each of those possible endeavors. We had a lot of folks who could speak eloquently on all these different things. It was a, I will tell you, it's a difficult situation because we had sixteen interviews and we had two openings. And so we had a hard time coming down to two. But after discussion that lasted well past ten o'clock, we did come up with a recommendation. We did agree that the following candidates were best aligned with the key priorities of the commission, Nawang Gonzar, Michael Ramirez, Renee Johnson, Megan Lundquist, and Ryan Loken. We made the recommendation to appoint Renee Johnson to a term and from March 1st, 2025 to February 29th, 2028, and Ryan Loken to a term from March 1st, 2025 to February 29th, 2028. Those were the recommendations of the interview panel after the work that we did last Monday night. Any questions on that, council? Hearing none? Ms. Mercer.
Nelson.
Renee Johnson and Ryan Loken.
Carter.
Johnson and Loken.
Muah.
Johnson and Loken.
De La Sando.
Johnson and Loken.
And Mayor Bussie.
Renee Johnson and Ryan Loken. With five votes in favor of our two recommendations, I will make a motion to appoint Renee Johnson and Ryan Loken to the City Parks, Arts, and Recreation Commission with terms from March 1st, 2025 to February 29th, 2028.
Second.
Motion and a second by Councilmember De La Sando. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero.
And Mr. Mayor, if I can, it looks like we are going to get the benefit of two aligned candidates, Gonzar and Lundquist on other, on the Human Rights Commission, which is great news. So they'll have a space to operate as a volunteer for the city anyway, which is nice to see.
That is exactly right. And I agree with you completely. That's very great to see. I'm glad we were able to find a space for both of them.
Yeah.
Our final item under, item two is two point five, our Sustainability Commission Appointments. The Sustainability Commission advises the council, city staff, and the community on policies, practices, procedures, and proposals that relate to the sustainable use and management of environmental resources. And that all includes air, water, energy, land, and ecological resources and wastes. There, it's a seven, it's an eleven-member body, and it looks like there were six applications with four openings. And the council, or excuse me, the interview panel said that the following candidates best aligned with the key priorities of the commission, Angie Bagash, Andy Scott, Claudia Athelson, Aaron Smith, and Michael Ramirez. And the interview panel recommended the appointments of Andy Scott, Angie Bagash, Aaron Smith, and Claudia Athelson, and Scott, Bagash, and Smith to serve from March 1st to 2025 to February 29th, 2028, and Claudia Athelson to a term from March 1st, 2025 to February 28th, 2027. Any questions on that, council? And I should state, Councilmember Lowman served on that interview panel, so he, he would have been speaking to this had he been with us tonight and would have been able to give a bit more insight. No council discussion on this. I will turn to Ms. Mercer.
Carter.
Scott, Bagash, Smith, and Altheon.
De La Sando.
Altheon, Bagash, Scott, Smith.
Muah.
Bagash, Smith, Altheon, Scott.
Nelson.
Scott, Altheon, Smith, Bagash.
Mayor Bussie.
Scott, Bagash, Smith, Altheon. Counting to five, all of our recommended appointments did receive five votes. So council, I would make a recommendation, recommendation to appoint Andy Scott, Angie Bagash, and Aaron Smith to terms on the Sustainability Commission from March 1st, 2025 to February 29th, 2028, and Claudia Athelion to a term from March 1st, 2025 to February 28th, 2027.
Second.
Motion and a second by Councilmember Muah for appointments to the Sustainability Commission as stated. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero. Thank you, council, for your work on this. And I do want to thank, I do want to go out of the way to thank our city staff who do outstanding work on this. This was, as I said, this was completely different just five years ago, if even then, even closer to that. But Emily Larson on our co-ed team has taken this and run with it and has really made this a clean, professional, understandable, and logical appointment process and deserves our heartfelt thanks for the work that she puts into this. And so thank you to her. And I think Councilmember Muah mentioned it, or Councilmember Carter, I believe it was. A lot of folks didn't get appointed tonight, and that's always the case with this, and a lot of very good folks haven't had an opportunity. I really encourage people, don't be discouraged, don't give up, continue to look for opportunities to serve the city, whether it's the city, whether it's a nonprofit, whether it's a faith community, whether it's work in the school. There are plenty of opportunities for really good people to put their talents to use in a variety of different ways within the city of Bloomington. And we would love to have you to do that. So if you didn't get appointed tonight, please continue to work for your community. Thank you so much. We will move on to tonight, tonight's consent business. Councilmember Nelson has tonight's consent business. Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I did not hear of any holds, just one last quick request, okay? With that, I will move items three point one through three point one nine.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Nelson, second by Councilmember Muah, to accept tonight's consent business as stated. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero. Thank you, Councilmember Nelson. As I mentioned when we talked about the agenda, we have nothing under Hearings, Resolutions, and Ordinances, so we're going to move on to item five, our organizational business. And go to item five point one, our right-of-way permitting codes updates discussion item. Brian Hanson, our development coordinator, is with us this evening. Pretty much got the stage to yourself tonight, Brian. This is.
I know, it's an intimate gathering here.
It is.
I kind of like it.
Good evening and welcome.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. I can share, I mean, I can log on to the webex, I suppose, I can share from my computer, too.
I do, but there's just notes go.
Oh, okay.
Sure, I mean, if that, I mean, if that works for you guys, I'd.
If we can do it this way. Oh, I see what you're saying, okay. All right, all right, there you go. Let me go to the. Don't look at my. I don't trust anyone. There we go, all right.
It'll work.
We got to work around. All right, good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. I'm here this evening to talk to you about our right-of-way permitting and some proposed city code updates based on some of the lessons we've learned last year. So briefly, I kind of want to go over some background. I know that most of you are, all of you are probably aware, either you heard from, from people you represent and or were impacted by personally last year with a lot of the fiber stuff, which is really the, I should say, the fiber installation, which is really kind of the impetus behind that. But I want to make sure that I, that the conversation, this applies to all right-of-way utility permitting, so not just the fiber, even though that was an impetus behind that. I don't want to forget kind of more of our legacy providers, our center point in our exiles, because this will apply to all utility providers. So just for some big, some background for the council. In 2023, we did make some changes to streamline the fees that are charged for our right-of-way permitting. Prior to 2023, we had a very convoluted methodology for applying fees to right-of-way utility permits. Everything was itemized, it was very cumbersome for the applicant, it also took a lot of time for staff. So changes were made in 2023 to kind of streamline the process, which was very helpful and a great start. In 2021, the bipartisan infrastructure law and Infrastructure Investment Jobs Act was passed by the federal government, and that released certain monies that were put towards installation of high-speed fiber throughout the country. So that really precipitated kind of the influx in fiber providers that we saw here in Bloomington. And that came to a head this past year, as all of you are well aware. We saw about a four-time increase from permits issued in 2024 versus just in 2021. So last year, we permitted just over 1.1 million linear feet of underground infrastructure installation and another 500,000 feet of aerial, just last year in 2024. It's also important to note that in, last year in June, we switched the permitting activities from our utilities staff to engineering. So that came over to engineering. At that time, we also backfilled three open positions, we hired three utility service specialists who started between May and June. We also had two consultant engineer inspectors who were on, on staff with us throughout the rest of the season that started in July. And then we also had two street maintenance staff that were dedicated full-time to right-of-way permitting that were able to, were able to utilize that year. In addition, we had our three office support specialists in engineering that were very much involved in that, as well as, you know, utilities was involved throughout the year, fleet maintenance. So it really was a public works-wide effort to really kind of manage this. And we were learning on the fly as we went. And obviously, there were some tough times. I'm sure you guys are all aware, I know that some of you experienced those personally. But I think we learned a lot, and the purpose of tonight is to kind of, after the season was over, we kind of took a reflection, looked back, said, what did we learn? What can we implement to make next year go better? And I think some of these, some of these proposals will help us do that in 2025 and So I have four kind of topic areas I'm going to touch on here tonight, if it's okay with with the council and the mayor. My, my thought is I would go through each of these. My, my thought is I would go through each of these, kind of pause, get your feedback, kind of give a thumbs up, thumbs down, and then move on to the next one, if that's okay with all of you. I'm seeing head nods, so we'll go through those. So the four items I want to talk about tonight are fee structure, restoration requirements, winter moratorium dates, and then removing registration requirements that we currently have. So I'll start with fee structure. So as I mentioned, prior to 2023, we had a very convoluted methodology for determining what the fees were. The idea in 2023 was let's simplify it for the users as well as for staff, so we can kind of be more efficient in how we use our time. So the current right away permit fee structure is set up this way. So we have a flat fee for a maximum length of up to half a mile or 2640 feet. And that applies to any right away underground permit. So you can permit up to that amount under one permit, and then after that amount of footage, you have to apply for another permit. Additionally, we have $150 flat fee for residential and water and sewer repairs. So these are typically shorter lines. The, the length, average length of this is less than 100 feet. So the idea was let's have a lower fee for those type of installations, because that's requisite of the amount of staff time and review time needed for a permit of that type. Additionally, we have a $36 right away processing fee that just applied to any right away permitting fee. So that's our current fee structure. So as we embarked on the fiber work last year and the influx of permits, the influx of work in the city, we ran into some issues that did come up. You can see here that we issued, the total number of right away permits was just about 1,500 permits. Like I said, that was four times as many as 2021. The total right away permits for fiber was at about 700. It's almost half of those related to fiber installation. And you can see that total footage of conduit installed was almost, you know, just short of a million feet. So a majority of the work that we saw last year was related to the fiber installation, the fiber to home installation here in Bloomington. Now, this caused challenges, because like I said, we were capped, or they were capped at that half mile footage per permit issuance. So the way that these permits are set up and the way the installations are going on throughout the city is, we have three major providers currently that are in the city installing high speed fiber. And they've broken up the city into installation or service areas. They have different names for them, but they're essentially geographical areas within the city where they have a plan set that says, here's how we're going to build out in this particular area, and then they permit for those, and they kind of work through each one of those areas. So on average, that's about 45,000 linear feet is what each service area is. And it varies, some are larger, some are a little smaller, but that's about an average area. So you can imagine, if you only can get a half mile or 2650 in there, there's a number of permits that are required for each service area, which requires them to apply each time. That's paperwork, that's processing, that's intake, that's reviewing, and then getting those permits out. And then being able to manage and understand which permits are being used, who's working under which permit at one time. It can create a lot of paperwork, a lot of, a lot of headaches for staff, as well as for the applicant, trying to figure out what have they applied for yet, what streets, what areas, what do they need to apply for moving forward. So this is just a very rough example. On the right here, you can imagine that if that was just a plan sheet, and this is pretty common, where you'll see multiple streets on a plan sheet in a given set. And like I said, for a service area, it's not uncommon to find 50 to 60 pages within a service area that someone has to review with each permit application. So as companies want to maximize the amount of footage under each permit to maximize the dollars they're paying, which makes sense, it's not uncommon to see one plan sheet that's been included in three separate permits. So you can imagine if one staff member is reviewing one, one set of plans, or one permit application, excuse me, and a plan set, they said this plan set, this plan sheet could be reviewed by three different people as part of three different permits. So you can see there's going to be some confusion if someone is reviewing a plan, they send something back for corrections to the applicant, they send it back to us, and then the next staff member is reviewing it. So it's very inefficient. And what we're trying to do is try to say, let's allow, is there a way that we can have the applicants apply for a service area under one permit, so we can review the whole plan set one time, make the comments, get them back, and then know what's going on? So again, current fee structure doesn't differentiate between underground and aerial permits. So a majority of the permits that were issued last year were for underground, so the underground boring, the, the drilling underground. But there's also a lot of providers that are doing aerial work on existing poles, so they'll be going through and wiring up fiber optic or, or utilities on those overhead poles. Obviously, this requires less staff time to review, because there's not as much to look at, there's not as many conflicts, obviously, with other underground infrastructure and utilities in place. And there's not as much restoration either, as far as the disruption to the ground. Now, I know there's some, been some disruption to other things that we'll get into here in a little bit, but they do require less staff time. And we don't have a way, currently, our current fee structure, we apply the same fees to both aerial and underground. Another issue or, or thing for note is neighboring communities have fee structures that are based on a base fee and then a per foot rate. So here's, I'm not going to read all these off, but you can kind of see kind of how some other neighboring communities have their fees set up for this type of work. So a base fee up to a certain amount of footage, and then after that footage, they would apply a per foot cost. You can see Dyna just has a straight for every 100 feet, you pay a cost that 50 is for, is for open, or excuse me, for open trench, and the 75 is for underground, I believe. So depending on the type of construction, you pay a different fee. So there's some different ways that are set up right here, but it's not uncommon to see fee structures that are set up with a base fee and then a cost per foot above a certain So what we're thinking, what staff is looking at, is changing our fee structure. So we would change our right away, are posing to change our right away underground fee to $150 base rate up to 100 feet, and then after that would be a rate of 40 cents per foot. The reason, how we came up with 150 is that matches our current utility and water connection rate. So for those shorter utility connections to, you know, bring water or sanitary sewer to a home or a residential parcel, that fee would remain the same, so it'll remain unchanged. And then, so that covers that 100 feet. After that, it would be at that 40 cents per foot. Additionally, we're looking at that aerial fee, so again, that requires less staff time, there's less, there's less time and review for those permits as well. So we're looking at reducing that upfront rate to $120 for that first 100 feet, and then again, a 20 cents per foot after that. And then also removing that right away processing fee, just as a matter of cleaning things up and making it more streamlined, because that would be captured under these proposed fees right here. And the reason behind this as well is to allow for those larger areas. So the goal of kind of this restructuring is to allow for an applicant to apply for a larger service area under a single permit, to be more efficient in how we review those plans, be able to submit those once, it's a full plan set, have staff be able to review those, and they can work in that full service area under a single permit as opposed to the multiple permits they have to do right now.
Excuse me, if I could ask a question?
Absolutely.
So is, is there a, a per foot, or is there a footage limit? Or could they literally go from one end of the city to the other on one permit?
That is a great question. I'm going to get to that in the second one, if I can touch that on that in the second portion, but that's, that's one thing that we also consider as well.
Okay, thank you.
Very good question. So the example proposed fee, so this is an example of what, so if they were permitting for half a mile, 2640 linear feet, you know, said our previous fee, our current fee, I should say, is 560 plus that plan review fee, which could see to 596. So you can see on the right there, it gives you an example. So if someone was doing that same distance underground, the, the, the cost would increase. So we're looking at, you know, roughly 1166 there, based on this. For the aerial, so if they're doing overhead right now, that would be pretty comparable to the current fee. So it'd go up a little bit, it'd go up, you know, about $34 there, or $36, excuse me. But it would be in the ballpark of the, of the, of the fee we currently have here. So, and I did want to, this, and this is based on, like I said, the maximum footage that our current fee structure allows. I also wanted to look at what average center point and Excel is, because I know this is important as well. Like I said, we're focused a lot on this fiber right now, but we anticipate this to be a three to five year spike, and then they'll be built out and they'll be gone, and this should hopefully normalize, we won't see as much disturbance as we have this, the past year, and we anticipate the next couple of years. So looking at that, this is based on the permits that were pulled in 2024 for both the providers, and we just took the average, rough average of the distance included in each permit. So you can see there, the average length in 2024 at least, for center point was around, was around 1,900 feet for per permit. So you can see how that would math would, would, would break down versus the current fee structure. And then for Excel, the average length is a little less. So actually, if the average permit in 2024, the total fee cost for an Excel permit based on the average footage in 2024 would actually decrease in this plan. So at this point, I wanted to pause and get answered questions to the mayor's question about the maximum distance. We'll get into that in the next section here, and that's a great question. But I guess I wanted to get feedback from the council if they have any questions about the proposed fee structures, concerns, and just kind of if anyone has anything I can answer at this point right now.
Council member Nelson.
Thank you, mayor. I guess my question is related to just the overall, is there a way to relate what are overall costs of a city to do the permit inspection? You mentioned the number of people there. Versus how much we collect on that? And then tangential questions, what impact will that have on our budget for the year?
Yeah, thank, that's a great question. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council member. So currently, like I said, with the 596, we have pulled, and I would have that for you before I come back for a formal action, but I can tell you that under a, a current permit right now, we are having field staff that need to go out there and do pre-construction inspections, go out there during construction, multiple visits. And I don't, that 596 is not covering the staff time even in the field, not including the review time right now. And the review time is really, it's, it's not very efficient, because they are reviewing multiple plans, the same plan multiple times. So that's one thing that we would track if these changes were made, and if we needed to reduce that base fee or that per foot fee to align with the actual staff time and the cost of the city, we would definitely do that. This is based on our best guesstimate right now, but we do to pull the numbers for staff time dedicated to right away permitting in 2024, so I do have those, and I would break that down and bring that back before the council, before formal action, so.
Thank you. And then you partially addressed this, is the, the fiber, which has caused a lot of the communication to us, and probably, and challenges, obviously, for you, is three to five years. Have you forecast what this fee structure looks like once that's kind of completed? And, and you said you looked at center point and Excel and, and see where that is, but if you look at also the cost side on the city side, what does it cost to do that? Are we going to be at least closely in balance at that time, or will it need to be re-reviewed?
Yeah, I think, I, my anticipation is that the amount of work and the staff time needed for, I'll call it more of our legacy providers, the X cells, the center points, would most likely decrease based on the, once the fiber is built out, I think we'll have less staff time dedicated to that. And to that point, I think we may need to adjust our fee structure accordingly to match the time spent. But I would still recommend keeping the structure with a base fee and a per foot fee. Now, the dollar balance may have to change to come into line, but I think that's a more doable structure from a process standpoint, and also is common with other neighboring cities. So I would, I would recommend to continue that, and then we could just can adjust the base and the per foot fee as needed.
And I would just say, based on what I know right now, and based on this, I would support the structure, and then I assume there will be periodic reviews of it, because wages go up and costs change and things like that, so.
Absolutely. And, Mr. Mayor, councilor, I, does, I envision this similar to when we implemented the small cell permitting, and we set that fee, when we made a commitment to go back and review. Every year, we reviewed the staff time costs associated with that, and we have adjusted that and continue to look at that on the annual basis. And I would, I would anticipate something similar with this, if this were to be changed.
Council member Alessandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. Curious as to the decision making behind going with a, a fee up to 100 and then a, a per foot fee after that versus the, I guess, the Edina and other folks' model where it was just like, I'm going to charge you X every 100 feet. I wonder what your methodology was there?
It, it was more to, because as you get beyond, I guess, in our, in our analysis, when you get beyond a number, that 100 feet is, it aligns with the water and sanitary sewer services and what we're charging currently. So we want, we didn't want to increase that fee to those type of connections for those. So that was, that's where we start with the 150. After that, as you get into longer runs, as the, as the plan sheets increase, typically the amount of review, the comments are, are the same comments over and over, depend, you know, there may be certain sites where you need to look into, but really that staff time, as you, as you expand that longer, it's more just. The amount of review per sheet actually diminishes, because like I said, the comments become redundant, so you can, you can review it a little faster. So that's kind of how, I mean, if, if it's the, the, the thought of the council that they want to have a base fee per 100 feet, we could do that as well and just keep that and just add that up, kind of how Edina does that, where that 75 and 50, if that's something that's more palatable to the council, we can definitely consider that, too.
No, I was just kind of curious. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I was just kind of curious if there was some reasoning for why, I mean, it, it's, it's less expensive this way than, than the other way, and if, if what I'm hearing you say is that we wanted to make sure that we weren't overcharging for the sake of it when we were just really trying to cover costs. Then that's reasonable. Thank you.
You're right.
Thanks.
Council member Mua.
Thank you, mayor. First, I just want to thank you, Mr. Hanson, for bringing this forward. I think that's been our message to staff, is how could we be more efficient and cut down costs and make sure that we're doing the right things and getting back to basics. So I appreciate that. My question really is specifically to center points, because I'm seeing the costs increase for the average, right? And so I'm, I'm wondering where that cost goes. I'm assuming it's going to get passed on to consumers. And so that's, that's one of my concerns, especially with our legacy providers who are going to continue to be in the community, who are going to continue to have a lot of work beyond the next three or five years, like the fiber is. Have we had conversations with center point about this? And what do other cities do to kind of manage the, the increase that we would see here with this change?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council member. So following tonight's meeting, I plan to reach out. I have been in contact with Excel Energy already. They had understood that we were proposing some changes, and I told them that we would be going to the council meeting this evening, sharing those with the council, following that, having conversations with them. So my intention, kind of spoiler alert to the end of the slides here, but, and just to meet with all the utility providers, the fiber providers, as well as the X cells, the center points, and share this with them and get their feedback. So, and I would bring that before you get, the council prior to any formal action. So that is part of, of the work. And it may be, I mean, you know, this is a starting point as far as the fees and that base on 150 and 40. If the feedback we receive, you know, if we dig into the, the costs that staff put towards it last year, if that needs to be adjusted down to just cover our cost and we are able to do that, I'm, we're definitely open to doing that, so.
Thank you.
Additional questions, council? Onward.
Thank you, appreciate it. All right, so the next item I want to talk about is restoration requirements. And I know this is a big one. This generates the most of our inquiries as staff. I'm sure it's generating the most of the inquiries that you're receiving from your constituents. So currently, we do have some language in, in, in the city code, in these couple sections here, that relate to timeliness of work, and then also patching and restoration of the right away. So we reference this, there's requirements, these are part of the permit. The issue we have right now is we don't really have a good mechanism to ensure that this is done before additional forward work continues. The way that this is being rolled out, and, and again, I'm speaking directly to fiber, is that, you know, installers are getting paid by the foot. So they're getting paid for how much conduit they put in the ground that they can pull fiber through, so that the providers can light that up and sell that service to the neighbors. So that's their motivation, they want to get that in the ground. The restoration is part of the work, I don't want to disparage them in saying that that's not important, but that's not how they're getting paid. So it's kind of not an afterthought, but it's not a high priority for the, for the providers, until staff gets on them, tells them that needs to be done. And to date, our only recourse has been to shut them down. So we had to do that with multiple providers last year at multiple times, where the restorations got so far behind, we were hearing from things, we were seeing things, we said, you need to focus in your restorations before any forward work can move forward. But didn't really have a good mechanism to do so, outside of that. So, and again, shutting them down has its downside, too, because they would focus a lot on getting that restoration done, but then once they're able to do work again, they are doing catch up, so they're really pushing to get that work done, and that can cause issues with not doing the locates properly and other things. So it would kind of snowball on itself. So it wasn't good for us, it wasn't good for the providers. So we're trying to find a way that we can make sure that that restoration work is prioritized by the providers and gets done, but also allows them to continue work and not slow them down. So again, like I mentioned, some of the issues, it was difficult to get compliance on those. We spent a good deal of staff time going out and documenting, so we'd get calls from residents saying, hey, I got a hole in my yard that's been here for weeks, no one's come back, what's going on? Or they tore up my grass, they haven't planted anything yet, no seeding, there's potholes. So when they have to go into the hard surface and, and locate those utilities, when they're making those crossings, they have these, they do what we call pothole, they haven't filled those back in. So all of these questions that come up. And like I said, there's no mechanism to restrict their work outside of stopping work, which is contentious and causes issues for both sides. And like I said, the majority of the complaints and the, the feedback we see from residents, and rightfully so, is related to restoration. They're not as interested in the productivity or how fast the stuff's getting installed. They want to know how it impacts their yard and their property, and how, how's that going to be resolved? So to the mayor's question before about, you know, if we change the permit struc, the permit fee structure theoretically, an applicant could apply for a permit for the entire city, you know, as long as they paid the fee and based on the footage, they could have one permit and work throughout the entire city under one permit. So what staff is, is proposing is to add a maximum. So right now, we're starting at fifty thousand total feet of underground infrastructure permitted active per applicant unless authorized by the city engineer. So a couple of things, the fifty thousand is based on that service area I talked about before, where we said about forty-five thousand was the average, some are smaller, some are larger, fifty thousand is kind of where we landed based, looking at the service areas that we had seen to date from the various providers. And that active means those are the permits that they're actually allowed to be working on. So to the point, I know there's some concern from one of the, some of the providers about, well, are we going to be restricting our work? We're not going to be able to make the progress we need. They can still apply for permits, they can go through the review process and kind of get them queued up in the queue. And then, once a permit has been closed out, as far as the restoration goes, they can activate that permit and continue to work, you know, uninterrupted. So it's really a management of the project by the actual, the, the installers and how they manage that that really restricts or allows work to continue. So it's really puts the onus on the permit applicants. So it doesn't restrict them at five thousand total feet or fifty thousand total feet, excuse me, and then no other work can be done. You just need to have your restoration done. And when I say restoration too, I should clarify, that doesn't mean that all the grass is grown in and everything is green, looks like before. It means that the grading's been done, if there's grass seed that's been planted, it's been planted and it's starting to establish itself. If there's potholes in the ground, that those are in the street, those are patched properly, permanent patches, not just class five or cold mix in there, but the actual bituminous that's in there. So that's what we're looking for. And once that's done, then they can go apply for a different permit. So that's how we landed the fifty thousand total feet. And then we also have in there unless authorized by the city engineer, because we understand there may be some service areas that maybe go fifty-seven thousand. And we don't want to make them pull two permits, it doesn't make sense, again, talking about how the plan set is complete for a service area, we want to be able to make that easy for them as well as for staff. So we want to have a little area of discretion there. And then it would not inhibit the ability of center point Excel to perform their work. So again, last year, looked at the total number, total footage of permits that were applied for by both of those. And center point last year had a total of just about sixty-three thousand linear feet of, of permits. So that fifty thousand, assuming they had, you know, and they had multiple permits because they had smaller, smaller shots. So as long as they restored a handful of those, they would still be able to work uninterrupted. So it wouldn't restrict them from continuing their normal work throughout the city. Same thing for Excel, last year they had forty-five thousand total linear feet of permits. So that would be fall below that fifty thousand. So again, not restricting them because we want to be cognizant of that as well, like we've talked about before, because this fiber we anticipate is going to be a temporary flux. But these ones are, the, the center points and the Excel's are going to be around for a long time. So we want to make sure that this works for them too. So with that, I will.
If I could.
Pause, yes.
Yep, council, any questions? We were thinking the same thing. Any questions on this council? Councilmember Kurt and then councilmember Muah.
Thank you, Mayor. So my understanding is when they restore, they're supposed to leave the property in as good a shape or better shape?
Correct.
How, how do you all know that they have done that work?
Yeah. And that is part of, let me back up. So we have inspectors to go out in the field and do that and need to sign off and say that this has been restored. Right now, with our current process, there are so many permits open, it's hard to know what area of the city that people are in, because they may be working in one area and then they leave and they work on an active permit in another area. And then by the time you get back to that permit, they're not sure when was that restored or when wasn't that restored. Oftentimes, it's the applicant saying, well, with the fifty thousand or some kind of restriction, that would motivate them, we hope, to say, hey, we have completed this, can you come inspect this so you can finalize this permit so we can move on to another permit? Right now, it is by, and I'll be honest, the, the amount of work that was going on last year and the issues that arose in the field is, we didn't have a lot of time for restoration. So we were going and doing a lot of that late this fall. And we'll be doing that again this spring because we didn't have time before the snow came. So a lot of those permits are still not closed out or in a warranty status, so we haven't said, yes, the restoration is done yet. Oftentimes, it's calls from residents saying, hey, I got, they've been out here for three we, three weeks ago and nothing's been done, what's happened? So we will go out there, we have a, a software called survey one, two, three, where an inspector can take a picture of the area, document the issue, and then we have that in a spreadsheet. And then we've been weekly sending those to the contractor saying, here's the list of areas that need to be restored, you got to address these, when you address them, let us know, we'll go out and check those. But that's not a comprehensive list, those are the ones that we hear of or that we see. It's really the onus is on the contractor to restore those. I know that one of the contractors is implementing a software this coming year where their staff is supposed to take pictures of all the disturbance and document it so they can track when it's restored. I haven't seen that yet, they told me they had that last year, but it wasn't active. So I'm hopeful, but I'm also realist about that. So that's one of the things that we're working on. So we've talked about maybe, again, if we're able to kind of hone in the area that they're working in to utilize our interns to go out there and actually start to document that stuff to stay on top of it, because this was the biggest issue last year for, one of the biggest issues was making sure the restoration was done and then having these back and forth and the staff time just needed to track down what was done and what wasn't done, so.
Okay, that's super helpful. I do think it might be nice, and maybe this is already in place, but it might be nice to have something on our website where people, residents could submit. I know that we tell people to email, you know, send emails, but if there was even just a really simple form on our website to say, hey, you know, if you have a lingering issue and you don't know if, you know, if or when it'll be resolved, you know, fill out this form. So maybe you already have that.
Nope, that is a great, thank you. Now that I can do this because I have the computer here, so. So we do, we did set up this website last year. So it's B L M dot M N forward slash fiber. And if you go in here, there's information. So we talked, first off, we talked about what fiber optic is, so residents can kind of understand what the process is and that this is a private utility that's permitted to do the work, it isn't city work. We have contact information for all of the fiber providers in the city, so these are direct contacts to them. So we call these numbers to ensure because we want to make sure that if someone calls us, they're not just going to an automated, you know, voicemail, that they're actually getting a real person. Additionally, we require door hangers to be hung prior to work being started in a neighborhood. So these should go the same time that people start to see flags and paint. We cracked down on this throughout the year. Again, like I said, we jumped into an engineering in June, so we were kind of playing, it was, we were playing catch up throughout the year. I feel in a much better place right now than we did going into last year. But we have the door hanger information right on here, so you can actually click on that as a resident and it'll show you the door hanger information that should be on there. We've talked about right aways and easements because you can understand, well, what, why are they in my yard? And then to your point, we do have the fiber installation incident report right here. So someone can go on here, fill out their name, their email, their phone number, give us all the information, what's going on, and this comes right to us and then we'll follow up with the resident if there's a concern, follow up with them. So we do have that available.
That's great, that's awesome.
And we do have business cards as well with a QR code on it that all of our inspectors carry that has this information on it, so they're able to hand those out to residents. So if they're talking with the resident in the field who has a question, they can give it right directly to them and they can access this, so.
That's awesome. Okay, the only other thing kind of related to restoration, and it's more about accountability, I guess, the other thing that I heard about was just some of these contractors going into backyards without note, giving notice to the property owners and having dogs. This happened to me. It happened, it happened to people that I know. And there were dogs in the backyard and there have been times they've left fences open and dogs have gotten out. And like, again, I know it's not really related to restoration specifically, but again, it's kind of the accountability piece, like if we're going to continue to issue permits and allow them to continue to do work in Bloomington, wanting to make sure that they are, you know, not potentially causing other kinds of harm to people.
And, no, and that's a very fair point. I know that we, there were companies that were kicked out of town. So we did establish, I established weekly meetings with the management teams for two of the three big providers last year, and those were very helpful. We, I've already been in contact with two of them this, over the winter to talk about, you know, give them a heads up about this information and just kind of plan for the next year. So those were a good touch point just to talk about those type of issues. And when we see those, I know that our staff, our inspector staff has done a phenomenal job of following up when we hear those. But that's one thing that we are stressing and we're actually holding kickoff meetings with all the providers and we're requiring all their crews to come into public works to go through with them. We have a slide presentation that was actually put together and started by field staff. They took the initiative to do this because they're like, we need to get this information out to them. And they kind of lead the meeting, bring them in, show them our expectations, talk about those exact things about, you need to knock on a door just because there's an easement in a backyard, you can't just walk into a backyard without notifying the resident, leaving doors, leaving gates open, those type of things, destroying, you know, landscaping in a backyard, as I know, unfortunately, you know, if you can go on the other side of a street and not impact that, do that, no, having those conversations. So I know that was frustrating for us as staff. And the, the meetings with the management was good, but oftentimes that message didn't get filtered down to the crews in the field. And we're trying to do a better job of how could we reach out to those crews in the field, bringing them in and having those conversations with them. And then having consequences when that happens, so.
Awesome, thank you.
You're welcome.
And thank you for bringing that up, council member, and thank you for your response, Brian, because that, that, I was going to wrap this up with that conversation of not only, not only the restoration requirements and the fees and so on, but the customer service expectations and the communications expectations and just the, the good neighborly expectations that we kind of need to make sure that we're in front of, rather than trying to chase after them and catch up to them and say, you must do this. I'm very glad to hear that you're already having the pre-meetings, setting the expectations, what should happen in the city of Bloomington when they come here and what things should look like when they're done.
Absolutely. And, and along those same lines too, I should mention, another comment that we received a lot is about identification of vehicles within the, because there's a lot of different vehicles and people see cars that are unmarked and people going around doing things like, who are these people? They're not with the city. So again, requiring, and we did this last year, we kicked, and we kicked vehicles off, that all your vehicles, I don't care if you tape a, a sign to the side of your, but you need to identify yourself as who you are so that a staff, we know who's out there and as a resident, you know who's out there and they can call in and say, yes, I see provider X out here and here's the issue and they know who that is right away. So as opposed to just random people walking in someone's backyard and saying, we're here to do something, that is unacceptable, we're not gonna, we're not gonna allow that.
Thank you. Good to hear we're on the same, same wavelength there. Councilmember Muah and then councilmember Alessandro.
Thank you, Mayor. My, my question is around the restoration and specifically the standard that we have for restoration, because I experienced road reconstruction restoration compared to center point restoration now compared to the fiber restoration. And I by far prefer sod because it's easy and know exactly where I have to water, who's responsible for it, and it's really effective at bringing back to the same level that it was before. Whereas my experiences with the fiber is it's kind of just throw some grass seed on and maybe some straw to make it look like we're doing something. And then, you know, two weeks later, I'm full of weeds and I'm the one that has to come back and put seed down and I'm the one that has to water it because they're not bringing water trucks around like we do for sod with road reconstruction. So my, my question really is around, why do we have two different standards that we set forward for all of the restoration work that we do? And is there's a, a way for us to have better restoration from these companies that are coming in and putting in this work?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council member. That's a great question. We are planning to reference our standard specific, construction specifications this year, so that is the specifications that we include with our payment management program. So when that contract goes out for bid, that's the requirement that those contractors are held to as far as restoration goes when you're talking about that. We started to reference those in our conditions of the permit later in the year because we were running into those exact same issues and our inspectors were saying, well, what am I supposed to be looking for? What is the standard that I'm supposed to be holding them to, to that exact point? So rather than make it, you know, because, and then the contractor's saying, well, what do you need to do? I mean, we had multiple contractors last year that went out and bought water trucks after we told, we asked them, well, how are you watering this? Oh, well, you need to have that equipment, that's part of your work if you want to be continuing to do work in the city. And they actually had to go out and buy water trucks and started to do that. So we are planning on referencing our standard specifications as part of our permit application or part of our permit issuance this year so that they will have something to point back to. And in the standard specs, it does talk about sod or seed and what the requirements are. So if that's a preference of the council to require sod all the time, you know, we can do that as far as our P and P goes, we do have the option, but there are certain requirements based on how much needs to be established, what type of seed and those type of things. So, because we did see that last year as well, yes, they put down the sod or the straw and they throw down grass seed and then they don't water it and nothing happens and then they say it's restored, so. And that restoration must start to be, and we have in the standard specs, it does talk about the establishment and how much needs to be established before we'll consider it the restoration taken. And so we're going to enforce that better. We started to get some education on that, our inspectors did later last year with our P and P staff who's used to that, who's more attuned to that, and we're planning on doing that again this year.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Councilmember Alessandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question for you about the, the kind of the ongoing nature of this. I know that right now we have the, the build out happening. Are the same, are the people that are currently doing the build out, they seem contracted out is, I guess where I'm going with this. You know, if it's, if it's AT&amp;T and T-Mobile and I don't know who the third would be.
AT&amp;T, T-Mobile and CenturyLink.
CenturyLink is doing fiber?
Those are the big, those are the big three.
Right. And, and so are they going to take over responsibility the same way that Center Point and Excel has today for the ongoing maintenance and the, like, when, when this proposed, I guess what I'm getting to is you keep talking about the Center Point Excel legacy stuff, but eventually somebody fiber is going to be legacy. And so like, how is that going to work? What, what's the expectation that we have about how many of those kind of over the top providers we're going to be managing to deal with and how they're going to allocate the maintenance work or other things like that that might come up over time then?
Yeah, that, and that's a fair question. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council member. The three are kind of approaching it in different ways. Two for sure are having a company that is leading the construction effort. So they are hired by the provider to roll out the infrastructure to support this particular provider's high speed fiber. And they will ultimately own that infrastructure. So I know that one for sure, like the Giga Power who is working with AT&amp;T, they have, you know, AT&amp;T has first right to utilize that infrastructure after a certain number of years. Potentially someone else could, you know, lease that space from, from that, from that company. So that's the way those two are set up. I believe CenturyLink is owning, and, and Lumen is owning their infrastructure as well. So those will be, to your point, those will continue, those will be legacy providers. But in terms of the restoration, getting back to the restoration, if there's issues that arise during that warranty period, so after the permit goes into, the permit is considered restored or the area is considered restored and the permit, it goes into a two year warranty period. So if there's any issues in that with their sinking, so again, we were asking before this winter, who is the contact for each of these for the patching and the roadway? Because, you know, if we see some settling, we want to know who to talk to to go back and fix that, because that's not our responsibility as a city at this point. It's still their responsibility. So we do have those contacts and are monitoring those as well. So we know who to go to. The ultimate owners of that infrastructure, like I said, is two of the providers are having a, the, construction company will own that infrastructure so they could potentially lease it to other parties in the future. I believe CenturyLink and Lumen is owning their infrastructure at this time.
They are also owning, okay. Thank you. That helps. The second question that I, I wanted to talk about related to restoration then is, is there any, I have no idea if this is a good idea or not, but I propose it. Would there be a, a reason to consider the city doing the restoration if they're failing to do it accurately and then charging them for it? Like to essentially so that we know that our staff is doing it to the standard that we expect it and then we're getting paid by the provider? I'm, I'm not necessarily suggesting that we, we, they, they farm it all out to us necessarily, although y'all can do that if you want. But my thought was, if there, if there's a problem space, you know, kind of like the But my thought was if there, if there's a problem space, you know, kind of like the way that we do, if somebody is not managing their lawn effectively, we can go in and we can cut their lawn for them, but then we charge them for it, right? And everything. Is that, are we considering any kind of concept like that? If you have considered and you're not recommending it, why not? I'm just kind of curious if it's been something you've talked about at staff.
Yeah, thanks for the question. Mayor Councilmember, we do require all the contractors to have a performance bond on file with us in order to do work in the right of way. So if someone was not meeting the requirements of the, of the permit, excuse me, we do have the opportunity to pull against that performance bond. So again, if it was a restoration issue and we went to them and said, this is not restored properly. We are asking you, this is the last, you know, and they refuse to restore it or unable to for whatever reason. You know, in theory, we could, we could pull against that performance bond. So we do have that mechanism available to us if we were to go to do the work to get reimbursed for that. So.
Okay. So, so pulling against that performance bond is the money, money portion of it, which is great. Would, would then we be, would we have already committed to doing the work? So if I, if I get a call from a resident and the resident said they've been out here three times and it's still not right? And, and inspection goes and says, you know, you're right, it's not right. Is at that point, then we would step in and do that work and pull from the performance bond to pay for that service? Is that what, I guess how, how it would work in reality?
Yeah, there's a little more, there's some more processes. I'll refer to the city attorney on that. But there's more processes in place as far as documentation before we can actually pull against that. So typically, in my experience in right of way and, and using performance bonds, the threat of pulling against that performance bond is enough to get action from them. Now, if we don't see action, then we do have the right and the ability to pull against that performance bond. So, but it's not as simple as the next day, like we could send crews, I mean, if it was something, you know, city crews could go out there. I would anticipate if we were to use a performance bond, it would probably be, we'd probably hire someone to do that and then use that performance bond to pay for that. So, but if it was a problem spot where there was an erosion issue or some other safety concern, obviously if we had, we could send out city staff to, to address that. I guess my concern would be that if the opportunity arose for them to just write a check and say, city, you deal with the restoration, that based on my experience, that some of them may take us up on that. And I don't know if we have the capacity or want to get into the full restoration game for all these people.
Right. I would, I would agree with that. I appreciate that. Yeah, I'm thinking like, you know, the next time somebody uses duct tape to, to, you know, fix a gas leak, we probably should get on that rather quickly and not wait for them to go through the regular roll of performance bonds, right? Yeah, understood.
They are no longer in the city and they're no longer in the state, I believe.
Yeah, yeah.
Understood.
Understood. Absolutely. Yes. Well done. Last question I had is, is related to this kind of five, 50,000 square feet. So a big part of the conversations that we had with folks were like, they came, they put the, the, the flags in the ground and that was fine because it was early spring and there wasn't any of my stuff. And now my, my native plants and everything have grown up around those flags and everything and they've not come here. So what, what is our expectation of that 50,000 feet as it relates to the time it should take them to actually get the work done in that service area?
Yeah, that's a great question. Thank you, Mayor and Councilmember. I should have mentioned this before. So on average, a, a typical crew, if things are moving smoothly, a single crew with a single drill can drill about 1,500 to 2,000 linear feet of pipe in a day. That's what we've seen. So if you think about that at 50,000, you know, and the working days in a month, you know, that gets them roughly, you know, about a, a month or so per permit, if it was a 50,000 linear foot permit. So our thought as staff behind that is that's enough motivation for them because they can't move forward past that. You know, they like to have work for, you know, continuous work. So by implementing a total footage that would be active at one time, our hope is that that will be enough of a motivation to make sure that that restoration is completed, understanding that they can't move forward with work. So if they're getting close to the end of that month and there's only 2,000 feet left in that service area and they haven't restored that, they can't get a new permit. So that's kind of where our, that's, that was our attempt to try to get better compliance on the restoration issues that you're, you're discussing, rather than pulling against the performance bond or doing some other things. So you're hoping that the motivation for footage and installation and continuous work to, to roll this out would be enough of a carrot for them to continue to do that restoration work.
Okay. So the expectation is not only is the work, that the work is complete, but that the, that the restoration has also been complete before they move on, all of that within, let's say, 30 to 45 days in a given service area. Okay, great. That sounds really good. I, I would just comment that I would want you all to be tracking that to see if this actually does move that needle. Because I think it should be pretty obvious to everyone if that actually is moving things in the right direction.
I, I agree. And I think, and I've got mixed responses from the, the, the providers that I've talked to so far. You know, I think ones that maybe aren't set up, you know, right now to have that level of restoration, maybe have some concerns about this. I think the ones that do have the equipment and kind of have the, the plan in place to be able to address this. I haven't seen a lot of pushback from them to date. And, you know, I'm sure that will change in the middle of the construction season if they get close to the end of a, a, a service area and they don't have the restoration done and we're telling them they can't move forward. Then we'll have those conversations at that time. But up to this point, we haven't had this mechanism before. So it was just a matter of kind of whack a mole, trying to figure out where they are. And then, like I said, our only kind of recourse was to shut them down for 72 hours, which just created more, created more issues for both sides. I don't think it really accomplished the goal or the, the outcome that we were hoping for was to get that restoration done. Because that's ultimately what we're trying to get done.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thanks, Mayor. Just a couple of quick questions. On the first part about fees, you had gone over what other cities are doing. Have you talked with what other cities are proposing or doing with regards to restoration and some of the service issues during construction, those types of things?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor Councilmember. I was actually a member of a panel last week at the City Engineers Association Conference in Minnesota. And I sat in on a right of way management session. And the majority of the questions were related to fiber installation. And I can tell you that Bloomington is kind of at the tip of the spear, so to speak, as far as the installation goes. I think we were one of the first communities in the metro area at least that were identified for a number of reasons. We didn't have this service before, the density, you know, they thought, saw this as a, as a fertile area for, for their, their service. So we saw the brunt of it last year with three, three providers in town, which is pretty uncommon. Most of the cities we talked to were being approached by maybe one or two, but they haven't really experienced it yet. So they were actually looking to us. I've received a lot of feedback from people that attended that session, asking kind of what we've done, asking how we handled it and some of the lessons that we've learned. So we, I, to your question, I haven't heard a lot from other cities. I have heard from one city that had a kind of a similar setup where they only allowed one permit to be open at a time before it was restored. And I had that confirmed by one of the contractors. So that kind of mirrors kind of what we're thinking here with that 50,000 or having that maximum footage to kind of mirror that. And that was our thought process behind that. But that's really the best, that was kind of what the, the city that was held up as an example, at least last summer, when we were having all these issues with, with restoration is that was the one that was kind of doing it and getting some compliance from that. And that was a tactic that seemed to be working well. So.
Okay. And then with regards to the specific proposal, the one concern that I do have, and this is probably just related that I don't know the exact sequence of the construction events, but the restoration, probably you got to put down the seeds, you got to water it. That's going to take a couple of weeks. So the, the stuff, the work that they do in the first couple of weeks should be restored by the end of that month. But I'm more concerned about the third and the fourth week, like the fourth week specifically, like you'd have to wait two more weeks while that comes back in and is restored before you can work in another permitted area before, you know, they've already applied for it, they're ready to go. But they're sitting there waiting two weeks until they can start the next area. Am I understanding that correctly? And is there anything, I mean, if they've, if they're continually and they're doing a good job with the restoration and it's just, we're waiting to verify that the grass is growing and they're doing a good job of getting back there. I don't want to hold them back from doing work. So that's my only concern about it as it's laid out.
Thank, and that's a, thank you, Mr. Mayor Councilmember. That's a fair question. And, and I could foresee maybe some language that alludes to restoration substantially completed or something to that effect too. Because I, that I think you do make a fair point because you're right. If they're on the last day of, you know, the last 2,000 feet and they just restored it, then how, yeah, there's going to be some time until that seed establish itself and they may be ready to move forward. And if they're showing a good faith effort and have kept up, then, you know, I think I want to, I would, I would suggest having some, some discretion for the city engineer or someone else to be able to make that call to understand that, yep, and keep them moving forward. Because I don't want to, or not, the intention of these changes is not to prohibit them from moving forward. We just want to make sure that we're ensuring that the, the residents are, are being treated, you know, that their, their issues are being addressed and that we're protecting the infrastructure that's currently in place for everyone.
Good point, Councilmember. Thank you for that. Let's keep moving.
All right. Third one, this one is pretty straightforward, talking about a winter moratorium date. So currently, we don't have a specific winter moratorium for halting construction for the winter hour or winter, winter months. Right now, this past year, you know, we were, I was in constant contact with the contractors as it got closer in October and November. And it was really based on the availability of the materials for restoration and also the weather. So the big driver is when the bituminous plants close down, we can no longer put permanent patches in any of those potholes in the streets. So we don't want to have open holes or temporary patches in our streets throughout the winter because we all know what water and all that ice does to the pavement. It's not good. So we were kind of monitoring the, the availability of the materials, how many potholes or how many restoration areas they had and kind of working with them on that. And then in the winter, we do consider work on a case by case basis in soft surface areas only. So you may see a handful of drills around town. We're allowing that work to continue in areas where there's no crossings of hard surface that require potholing. So if they need to cross a roadway or any public right of way, hard surface where they would need to, for construction purposes, drill down to be able to, to spot or to daylight any type of utility they're crossing, we are not allowing that in the winter because we don't have the availability of the materials to, to, to permanently patch those are not available at this time of year. So that's where that no potholing is, is allowed. And last year, well, I will move forward to the next slide here. So Hennepin County does have language related to winter moratorium, which you see here, November 15th through April 15th. Last year, actually, November 15th just happened to be the day that we told them that that's where we're going to end the season. It was a Friday. And then the following week, the weather looked bad. We got, got word that the bit plants are closing down. So it just kind of worked out that way. But there's a little ambiguity right now towards the end of the year, trying to understand where we were at. The contractors didn't know. So we were kind of hesitant to let them continue to move forward. They wanted to push forward as far as they could. So staff is proposing just to give clarity to both staff as well as any contractors to adopt language similar to Hennepin County to have that November 15th through April 15th moratorium, unless authorized by the city engineer or the representative. So any questions or comments on that?
I think that makes good sense. Councilmember De La Sandro.
Just quick clarification. You mentioned right of way, but I had folks in my backyard doing aerial work. Aerial doesn't, doesn't get affected here or it does get affected?
Correct. We would not, this would not apply to aerial because there's not underground, there's not impacts to the hard surface. So we allow aerial work to continue in the winter months as long as they're not impacting the hard surface. So if it's above, above ground, it still needs to be permitted and we still need to go through that process. But we do allow that to continue through the winter.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Councilmember Muah.
Thank you, Mayor. This question kind of relates back to the restoration piece of it. Because myself and my neighbors experienced this late last year where they came through and then frost, right? And then when do they come back in the spring? If they come back in the spring in, in Minnesota, right? Like if you're going to seed and want it to hold and make it through winter, you got to be 30 to 45 days before the first frost, which would be October or something. So just wondering what the winter moratorium does to the restoration piece? If they're at November 15th, what do they have to do to, to make sure that the restoration is done in the spring?
Yeah, that's a great question. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Councilmember. So backing up to the hard surface, we were really focused on that because we were concerned about the availability of the materials. And if they get too far behind on those and the bit plants close or we get a cold snap and they're unable to do that, then we have issues. So we were monitoring that closely with the restoration list, so trying to look at who had, how many open hard surface restorations were out there and kind of monitoring that and using that to determine if we would allow them to continue forward work. I can tell you that for all three big providers, we are requiring that all restoration from last year that carried over. And we have a big list from one of them and they're well aware, and we've talked about it, that no forward work in 2025 will be permitted until those restoration items are addressed. So to your point for those, the seeding and the, and the soft surface, as we call it, if there are issues from those last year that they have not addressed, those need to be addressed. We need to see that. We need to see good faith effort that the seed is establishing itself before we allow them to continue work this year. And that would be, that would be our expectation moving forward as well, regardless of whether this moratorium is in place or not, that any open restoration items from a previous year, no forward work would be able to continue the following year until those restoration items were addressed. So we're starting from a clean slate or zero, so to speak, and then they can work forward from there.
Last item.
All right. The last one, this is kind of a cleanup item. So we currently have in the city code, something called registration requirement. So it requires persons performing work within the city to register with the city. We have a nominal registration fee that's associated with that. This was put in place prior to the Department of Labor and Industry having this requirement as well and tracking this. So we have not collected on this fee in a number of years. Staff looks at the Department of Labor and Industries database. We have access to that. So that's what we reference to confirm compliance with that. And like I said, we haven't collected these registration fees for years because we haven't required them to actually fill this out. So staff is recommending to remove this section from the city code. There's language in this section as well regarding bonding and certificate of insurance requirements. That language is also included within the permitting language within the code. So that would remain. So they would still be required to provide those bonds, that, that right of way performance bond, as well as that certificate of insurance that we talked about before. It would just remove this registration requirement, like I said, that hasn't been used in a number of years and is already being collected by another agency in the state. So.
Really briefly, do, should, should we, I guess the council, should we reference in this section then that there's an expectation that they are registered at the state appropriately or something like that? Is, you know, we, we oftentimes when we are, are using a state based thing, we will often in our code refer to that state thing. So that if it changes, we keep up with it by virtue of having referred to it. Does it make sense to do that in this particular case? Thoughts?
Yeah, I think.
I don't know. I mean, it's more of a policy question for us about whether or not we care to add that to the code. And I don't know, Ms. Manderscheid, if you think that that matters one way or the other, but it just seems like a spot where we could refer to the state legislation on this and like leave it there. And then you don't ever have to worry about it. If it changes, we don't have to do anything.
Mayor members, we can certainly look into that. We have received similar feedback in the other direction that they like to have it all here. And then it, it offers us an opportunity to periodically review it and, you know, check. So it cuts both ways, but we certainly will add it to the list of things we're looking at before finalizing.
All right, thanks.
Anything additional, counsel? Well, thank you. Good questions, counsel. One, one final question, just a more overarching question. So we've been talking about the right of way as it applies in people's front yards, but the right of way also includes in the street itself. And are there, have you considered all of this in terms of that, where work within the street itself by these not public utilities? How it all applies and how this kind of all works with work within, between the curbs as opposed to outside the curbs?
Yeah, and it would apply the same. Obviously, most providers, everyone's looking to try to stay out of the street because the cost of insulation are much less when you're working out there and not having to tear into the street and restart that out there. As you're probably all well aware, the right of way is getting very crowded. There's a lot of stuff in there right now. So it's imperative. So when we talk about, actually, I'm going to talk about these updates and then I'll get back to your question if that's okay with you, Mayor. This one of these goes right into that. So moving forward in 2025 and beyond, just a couple of things that we're looking at doing. One is driveway permitting for bituminous in 2026. So currently we issued, you know, driveway permits for work in the right of way. We treat concrete and bituminous different. And we want to be uniform in how we apply our permits and how we apply our review. So we are proposing to bring that back before you in 20, prior to 2026 construction season, just to have some clarity on that for both staff as well as the, the persons pulling those permits. Secondly, there's currently a safety qualified underground telecommunications installer program that has been approved by, by the state legislature. It's effective July 1st of 2025 as of right now. And it's for the seven county metro area. So this requires anyone doing underground installation utility work to be certified and have a card that requires they have to go to 40 hours of training. And anyone that's operating a drill, so the drill operator itself that's doing the underground boring and the locator at the front that's kind of showing, dedic, or show, or, or leading the drill and telling it where to go, both must be qualified or certified to do work. We are in support of this as staff. We have been contacted by members that are supporting this legislation to testify or provide letters of support in support of this. This is based on issues that have arisen in other communities in the past couple of years, a lot of it related to fiber, but just underground work in general. Right now, there are, as you could imagine, some, some other groups that are, are, are opposed to this and are working to see if they can have this legislation changed and or removed altogether. So as of right now, it's still effective. And if it does go into effect, July 1st is currently constituted, we are going to be applying this and we'll require that and have those, installers will have to have those cards. And if they don't, they won't be able to do work in Bloomington. So. Lastly, two things, contractor meetings. I discussed these a little bit earlier. We're continuing to have those. We're having kickoff meetings with all the contractors sometime in March, hopefully, to go through our expectations, talk about the upcoming city projects to coordinate that work, talk about holidays, working hours, all those things so that we have that one touch point. So we're all working off the same page moving forward. The last thing is the GIS portal. So talking about the information, so again, kind of getting back to your question, Mr. Mayor, regarding kind of what the impacts are and are crowded right of way. So one of the issues that we ran into this past year is the quality of the plans being submitted for review. So in previous years, I think the expectation from utility providers, when things were less crowded, is they could kind of submit a, a plan and have a line on a sheet and say, we're going to be in this area and that was good enough. And then they went out there in the field and they kind of figured it out and they stamped it and it was good to go. That's not acceptable to us anymore. There's just too much stuff in the right of way. There's too much stuff to stay clear of. It's very crowded. We need to have, make sure that we ensure the integrity of the utilities that are already in, in place. Also have the ability to have room to maintain and, and repair our facilities, other facilities. So it's imperative that the plans reflect what they're actually going to be doing. The days of kind of field designing, it no longer work for us. So we are working with our GIS staff to have a portal, hopefully. We have a meeting later this week to have a one-stop shop where applicants could go to grab existing information. So right of way information, existing utility information will be all be coming from one source. Because right now we're seeing different sources from different providers and we're not really sure where that data is coming from. It's causing a lot of back and forth and just inefficiencies in the review and the plans and it'll, so that's another thing. So to your point about working in the street, knowing where all this stuff is, knowing where all the utilities are, where all the infrastructure is and how the proposed infrastructure melds with that is vitally important. And that's something that we're, we're really stressing this year. We got some pushback from the providers because I think they were used to the old way, but I think they're starting to come around and understand that we're not going to flex on that. So.
Good. Thank you. Councilmember De La Sandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Quick question about the installer program. Do you, generally speaking, I understand why you'd be supportive of it. Have, have, have you all actually reviewed the program itself and like feel like it's a good program? I say this because as somebody who makes policy sometimes, people can make policies, but not necessarily like end up with good results, right? And I want to be sure that like getting that certificate isn't about checking a box, getting that certificate is out about learning how to do something well. So have, have our inspectors or the folks on our, our staff who know how to, how it should be done, have they reviewed the program materials and feel confident that it's a good program that will actually yield the results we're looking for?
Great question. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Councilmember. Yes, our staff has reviewed the materials and, and their feedback has been, it, it would be, they're productive and they address the issues that we're seeing in the field. The one, the, the feedback, one of the feedbacks that I've received from the contractors in, in defense of them or in fairness to them is that the ability of the training isn't widely available right now. So there's not a lot of places where you can get this required training. So I think there's a little disconnect or there's some confusion by them that if this does go into effect, how do they get their staff to these trainings in time to be certified to continue to move forward? So I think that's some of the concerns that I've heard from the. So I think that's some of the concerns that I've heard from the contractors. I'm not sure, I, I believe that more trainings are being available, and there's more places where we can get this training, but right now, that's some of the disconnect or some of the confusion from the contractors, is if this does go into effect, where do we have to go to get this training? And are there enough trainings available so we can get all of our staff up to speed?
And that makes sense, for sure. Do you, have you heard at all from the, the CWA, the, the Union Communication Workers of America Union, about whether or not they're endorsing this or providing any classes or anything like that, that, you know, those contractors could take advantage of?
Yeah, we have been approached by Launa, who is, is very supportive of this, and they're one of the ones that, that promoted the original legislation and are providing classes. So they're the ones that have reached out to the city to this point to talk about that, so.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, minor question, actually, probably for you, Mayor, is if we're supporting something that's in the legislature, do we need to make any modifications to our legislative, approved legislative agenda?
I think, I think we have a, a catch-all.
Perfect, I like the catch-all.
We have a catch-all.
Other things that are good.
Kind of gives us the opportunity, as things, as new issues emerge, that we're able to, to, to work on behalf of, on behalf of the city in ways that are consistent with what the city has done in the past.
And I should clarify, Mr. Mayor Councilmembers, we have not formally given any letters of support yet, we have been asked to support that. So as staff, we have been in contact with staff, but we have not formally done any action, taken any action yet, I should say, so.
Council, anything else? Well, thank you very much for the presentation tonight.
Yeah, I appreciate everyone's time and their feedback, and like I said, following tonight's meeting, I will be engaging with the utilities to kind of share tonight's thoughts, get their feedback on that, and then I hope to come back before you in March with some formal code changes for your consideration, and then have these in place, any changes in place hopefully in time for the 2025 construction season.
Great, thank you.
Thank you all.
Council, the last item on our agenda is item 5.2, our city council policy and issue update. I have a couple of things, a recap of our listening session that we held earlier this evening. We had a total of, I think, six speakers earlier tonight. We heard from Mariar Gannon and Christine Thompson, who were speaking in favor of finding a compromise and more room basically for the boutique at the new Bloomington Health and Wellness Center. There is currently a boutique at, at Creekside, and we're trying to find the best way to, to include the boutique in the Community Health and Wellness Center, but I don't think we're quite there yet in terms of what meets the needs of the city, but also what meets the needs of the boutiqueers, the folks who, the crafters who create things for the boutique. So that conversation continues. We heard also from Sheila Berry, Cheryl Cruz, and Michelle Saucy regarding an incident or an ongoing interaction between the Bloomington Police Department and the Berry family, and they, they provided some details for the council and asked us to consider it. Unfortunately, there is an ongoing investigation related to family members and a number of things within this, so we weren't able to provide a whole lot of information. What we were able to do is, is collect the information, and I'm sure we'll, councilmember, or excuse me, city police chief Booker will, will take that information as, as we move forward and try and figure out a path forward. And finally, we heard from Andrew Davis, a local small business owner, who has ongoing issues with things parked in his driveway and the city's public health and public community development folks telling him that he can't park in the front yard. And so we offered to set up a, a meeting between Mr. Davis and our, our, our folks at the city to figure out a way that they could continue to move forward, that could, there could be a, a solution to this. It has to do with parking trailers and equipment and so on in the front yard, and how that relates to city code, and so on. So that was our listening session this week. I also wanted to take just a minute, if I could, council. Excuse me. So I've seen online, and you may have as well, we've had a, there's been some concern posted by some folks about the Community Health and Wellness Center planned for the Creekside site, and as it relates to some of the homes and the properties on Newton and Morgan avenues. And as you know, we're in the process of planning this facility, it's going to support our recreational fitness activities and community programs for folks throughout our community of all ages and so on. And this new center is going to replace both Creekside and our Public Health Building. And there is, I think, information online right now, that there are concerns that the city is taking homes to, to try and accommodate an expansion of the Community Health and Wellness Center. And what I wanted to do was to be sure that we clarify that the city is in fact not taking any homes. There are no condemnation proceedings, there's no eminent domain proceedings. What we are in is currently an inquiry phase of conversations with some of the property owners on both Newton and Morgan avenues, which means we're evaluating possible voluntary sales of those properties to the city as possible options to improve access to parking and green space near the city, the new facility. And the, the properties are several houses closest to 98th Street. Last fall, the city consultant reached out to these property owners to gauge their interest in selling their properties to the city. Not a taking, but a voluntary sale of their properties to the city. And a catalyst for these conversations with the property owners has been from the, the community. We've heard a lot of feedback that the, the community wants access to nature and green space to complement the new facility, such as outdoor programming areas. We were a little bit tight on that type of outdoor programming or green area with the current configuration, so we're looking for ways to possibly expand it. We have done several rounds of engagement to gather community and great feedback, including, as all you, you all know, a survey, a kickoff event, a bunch of focus groups, and a recent event where community members could review and comment on the schematic designs. And to be clear, to all council members here and to everybody watching, we're having conversations with the property owners to see if they're interested in selling. There is no taking of a property going on, we're having conversations with the property owners to see if they're interested in selling. If the property owners elect to sell their properties, the sellers will be paid for the property, and they'll receive relocation assistance. And it's important to note also that no decisions have been made, the council hasn't talked about this in, in a while, and the council will need to decide if the city would like to purchase the properties. And if so, the council would take that action on any purchases in an open public meeting. So I wanted to make sure that information was out there. I'll repeat it again on Wednesday in my council minute, because this is one of those deals where some of the inflammatory statements and some of the misinformation was halfway around the world while we were putting on our shoes again, trying to get the truth out there. And so I wanted to make sure that we had the opportunity to let folks know exactly what was happening. Nobody is being forced out of their home, no one is, no homes are being taken, this is a conversation with, with property owners about the potential sale of their homes. Any questions on that, council? Very good. Madam interim city manager, do you have anything for us this evening?
I do, Mayor and council members, I have two updates, both celebratory in one way, I guess. So Bloomington, the city of Bloomington, has been selected to present at the International City County, City County Managers Association. That's a lot of to say, and we like to call it ICMA, but I wanted to spell that out for people. We were selected to present in October in Tampa on Growing Ripples: Lasting Legacy, A Culture of Civic Engagement in Bloomington. Eric Holtos and Arianne Williams will present the session of civic engagement in Bloomington. Or they'll present the session and share how our unique leadership program grows resident capacity to serve their community, how board and commission members engage in strategic planning and continuous improvement to enhance their experience and impact and connectedness, and how investments are made in the city's youth to grow tomorrow's leaders in government. So we're very excited about that opportunity. Special thanks to Caitlin Danielzak for helping coordinate our ICMA submissions as well, and Caitlin's here tonight. So we're excited about that.
That's very cool. Congratulations on that.
It is, this is the place to go once a year to collaborate and connect with city leaders across the entire nation, so we're very, we're very excited. And then second, tonight is our very own Safa Mercer's last city council meeting. So we wanted to take a moment to lift her up. It is our last council meeting, it is not her last day at work, however. She is taking on a new role in the Bloomington Police Department and serving alongside the police chief's office and administration. She served in this role for over a year, and it was countless hours with all of you and with everyone who joined, and did it with a smile and with such respect, as well as helped to make sure that our listening sessions went well. She has served the mayor and all of you as the council members and the city manager's office with professionalism, again, with respect, and with excellent customer service. She always takes the time to engage people across the city with a human-centered approach, and she'll take that approach with her as she continues to serve residents in a friendly and relational manner. And she greets everyone, guests, staff, city manager's office with an authentic smile and kindness. We will miss you in that space, but we know that you will continue to serve the city of Bloomington in your new role, and we're so glad that you are continuing to stay with us, so thank you so much.
We're certainly going to miss you, I'm happy that you're moving on to bigger and better things, but we're certainly going to miss you. And thank you so very much for all the work that you have done for me personally, for the council as a whole, and just working in the city manager's office, keeping things moving smoothly, so thank you so very much.
It's my pleasure, thank you.
Chief Hodges, you owe me one now. You owe me one. Council, anything else to add tonight? Councilmember DeLaSandro.
I just wanted to share another great public finance seminar from the Ellers folks this past Thursday and Friday, several staff members attended, Councilmember Loman and I were able to attend as well. I'm always, I'm always grateful to the opportunity to go to that, because I think, you know, as we all sit up here, we know that our work with our finances is among the most important that we do, and it, it means understanding a little bit more every day about the, the best way that we can serve the public with those dollars. So I took away a couple of really key learnings, and especially around our TIF districts, and since we've been, like, you know, I've, I've constantly been learning about how those things can be leveraged. And I think there's some opportunity for us to do more in the small business space around the city now that we've got the Port Authority and the, and, and the, you know, our community development teams kind of looking citywide on that front. And there were some nice examples, given about how, you know, different projects that were done leveraging that. So more, more I'm sure we'll hear over time, but just a shout out on that, and thank you very much for the opportunity to join everyone on staff on that.